All right, good morning, everyone. Everybody got your microphones on and ready? Let's stand and have a prayer and a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we pray that you will guide us today as we do the county's business, Lord, and I pray that you'll protect each and every one in our county, Lord, and our state and our country, and help us to conquer and defeat this coronavirus, Lord, and all the damages it's causing, Lord. I pray that you, as I said, guide each one of us on our decisions, Lord, that we'll make the best possible decisions today. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our meeting today being the 23rd of August 2021, just after 9:00 a.m. You're here for Commissioners Court Meeting, Titus County, and we will begin with item number one, our public comment opportunity time. However, you may also speak on any agenda item. Any general comments to begin our meeting today during public comment time, item number one? If not, I'll move to item number two, three, and four. We have three sets of minutes here, August the 9th, which was two weeks ago. Then we had a little extension to that meeting for an item that came up after the agenda was posted. And then we had a meeting to discuss some emergency repairs to some equipment that we handled on the 12th that included approving rental of some equipment and repair of some equipment based upon some insurance proceeds that we would get for the damaged equipment. So I'll begin with the main meeting that was the bulk of the August 9th. That's item number two. Consider those minutes for your approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion and a second to approve the main minutes from the August 9th Commissioners Court Meeting. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose there are none. Item number three is that single item agenda that we tacked on at the end.
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of that set of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And then lastly, item number four from last Thursday where the Commissioners handled that matter in my absence.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Parchment.
Second.
Second Commissioner Parker. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of that set of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Joyce, for all that work. Item number five, report from Commissioners regarding their roadwork activities. I'll start with Commissioner Parker.
We've been working some on the bridge that we've got out. We've got County Road 4765 closed off between 500, I think's the address, and 300 and 500. The bridge has got some structural damage and all to it. We're working on it. It's got it tore partially apart and looking to see what we're going to need to do. Have talked to a couple of people about looking at it. They're supposed to be getting me some bids on possibly doing some concrete work and all on the head walls and underneath each side of the walls. Been side cutting, mowing, and scabbing on several other roads.
Okay. Commissioner Applewhite?
We've been finishing up on side cutting. We've got all the mowing done. We're starting over again on it, and we've put primer on 3240, 3241, 3243, and 325 and 3320, about seven miles. We got ready to be ready to chip seal.
Good deal. Commissioner Fitch?
All right. We cleaning some ditches out on County Road 2850, and we installed two culverts. One of them's where the school bus turns around down at the end of the road, and we did some ditch work and put a covert in on 1240 and fixed some base failures on 2500 and 1070. And we've been doing some paving on 4550, and we cut a few trees down on 2850 and did some side cutting, kind of sporadic in several places in precinct two, and we finished the first round of mowing. Start again.
All right. Commissioner Parchment?
We finished up County Road 1695 and got it ready for chip seal. We have been installing culverts, patching potholes. We cut some trees, and we started back mowing and side cutting.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item number six. Consider and possibly approve the consolidation of voting precincts for the November 2nd, 2021 constitutional amendment election. And this is a consideration to reduce some of the expenses related to any election, especially on an election period where there may not be as high of turnout. But I'll let the expert tell us about that, and Pam Holmes is here, our elections administrator. Pam, tell us about item number six and what you would like to do.
Well, I require my law to have one precinct open in every Commissioners precinct, and I do have a list here. Would you be going interested in seeing your Commission precincts, I mean voting precincts, senior Commission precincts?
Probably so. Why don't you just discuss whether, if you've got enough copies, they can kind of look at it as you go?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. So, as you can see in Commissioner Precinct Number One, we have precinct two, three, 16, and 17, that's Ponty Baptist, Bridges Chapel Community Center, the Civic Center, and Lagos Christian Center. And I would be interested in combining those four over to the Civic Center, which seems to be a pretty good gathering place for those four, and we can get those combined into there if that's what you think would be best. Commissioner Precinct Number Two contains one, four, 11, 12, 14, and 18, which is Shepherd Street Church of Christ, Lodge at Fire Station, the Winfield City Hall, the West New Hope Methodist Church, and Titus County Courthouse Annex, and Farmers Academy Methodist Church. To me, the most probable gathering place for those would be the County Courthouse Annex. And I would like to just stop and say, I appreciate Winfield City Hall extending us the opportunity to move our polling place over to there because it had been at the school previously, and I understand they're going to be selling that property, so we had to find a new polling place, and we appreciate Commissioner Fitch finding that for us and getting that set up. And then in Commissioner Precinct Number Three, we have five, eight, nine, 10, and 15, which encompasses Sugar Hill, the Disabled Veterans Building, Calvary Baptist Church and Talco, Argo Fire Station, and Neville's Chapel Baptist Church. I think it'd be okay to have them come in too, the Disabled Veterans Building.
What's the address on that?
Washington. I think it's 1901 Washington.
What have we called that in the past? We called it...
The IBEW.
IBEW, that's what I know it as.
Yes. So the Disabled Veterans took that over about two to three years ago, and they agreed to let us have our polling place still be there, but it is a different name on the building now.
Good.
And Commissioner Precinct Number Four, it encompasses precinct, voting precinct six, seven, 19, and 20, which is the Cookville Fire Station, the Wesley Fellowship Hall at the Northeast Texas Community College, Living Truth Fellowship Church, and South Jefferson Baptist Church, and I would consider consolidating those to the South Jefferson Baptist Church.
So you're going to take it to the bare minimum. You're proposing going to four.
Uh-huh.
Have we ever done that before?
Yes, we did. We did that on the last constitutional amendment in 19.
We did. Okay. What's the turnout expected for, well, let's talk about the turnout for this one compared to, say, the big one we just had. What would it be?
Um...
A fourth, a half?
Um, yeah, I would think it'd be less than a fourth.
Less than a fourth, okay. And then looking at the calendar, Tuesday, the 2nd, that means that early voting would begin two weeks and a day prior on a Monday? Is that still right?
It's October, is it 18th?
18th is a Monday, two weeks and one day prior. So you'd go the 18th through the 22nd. Would you also go Saturday, Sunday?
We're going to go the 18th through the 29th, so on weekdays, and then the 28th and 29th will be 12-hour days.
And yes to Saturday, Sunday in between those two weeks, 23rd and 24th?
We will not have any weekend voting.
Okay, no weekend voting. So 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, five days, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, with extended hours on the last two days.
That's correct.
Normal hours being eight to five.
Eight to five.
And then you go eight to...
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven on those last two days, and then the day of the vote begins seven to seven.
It's also seven to seven.
Okay. All right, guys, we've done it before. It's a good cost-saving move with two full weeks of early voting. What do you think?
Make a motion, we approve it.
We have a motion here. Anyone want to second that or discuss it?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchment. Anyone want to discuss? All right, all in favor of approval of consolidating voting precincts for the November 2nd election? It'll be on Tuesday, plus two weeks of early voting that will be all at your offices.
That's correct.
Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And while you're standing there, Pam, we've got item number seven. Consider and possibly approve voting precinct judges and alternate judges.
Okay, we can go over those. I have the two major parties submit to me a list every two years to have this approved, and so the Republican list, I only have one, two, three, three alternates, and the rest are presiding judges, but let me just go down here in voting precinct order. Voting precinct number one, Tony Giacino is alternate. Two, Karen Gavler is presiding. Three, Jenny Solomon is presiding. Four, Tim Blair is presiding. Five, Tammy Case is presiding. Janice Brooks in six is presiding. Number seven, Lori Stringham is presiding. Number eight, Neta Walker as an alternate. Number nine, Cindy Harrison presiding. Ten, Gary Oliver presiding. Eleven, Robin Harris presiding. Twelve, Linda Zepeda alternate. Fourteen, Paula Dialle presiding. Fifteen, Diane Owens presiding. Sixteen, Phyllis Welch presiding. Seventeen, Jamie Mars alternate. Eighteen, Shirley Counts presiding. Nineteen, Rhonda Kill presiding. Twenty, Frank Stringham presiding. Early voting clerks, Paula Dialle will be the presiding judge on that, and it will include Neta Walker and Sharon Cutler as the Republican judges for, clerks for the early voting. And then early ballot board, the presiding judge will be Emily Aiken, and Central Counting Station, the presiding judge will be Nigel Christopher. Central Counting is what we do on election day. And then for the Democrat Party, Mr. Leonard presented this list to me. Number one, the presiding judge will be Bruce Oco. Number two, alternate Helen Rockwell. Three, alternate Janice Chisholm. Four, alternate Bridget Minter. Five, alternate Deborah Mears. Six, alternate Carolyn Winter. Seven, alternate Katara Heinz. Eight, the presiding judge will be Donna Norman. Nine, an alternate Sherri Carruthers, Shirley Carruthers, excuse me. Ten, the alternate will be Gail Hill. Eleven, the alternate being Rosemary Vanda. Twelve, the alternate will be Betty Russell. Fourteen, alternate Sylvia Morales. Fifteen, alternate Bobby White. Sixteen, alternate Wayling Payne. Seventeen, alternate Mary Castaragna. Eighteen, alternate Jeanetta Hargrave. Nineteen, alternate Betty Nels. Twenty, alternate Bobby Williams. And then the alternate for early voting will be Aileen Lindsay. And I do approve these lists, and it's up to you to give the official approval.
Okay. All right, anybody want to discuss, or you want to approve Pam's recommendation?
Make a motion, we approve it.
I heard three of you, so I think I heard this. Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second Commissioner Parchment. Any discussion, questions? All right, good job. Thanks to our party chairs and to you for sorting that out, and to those that volunteer.
Thank you. I'll just leave this with you to sign, have the Commissioners sign for the order for the special election.
All in, let's go, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, go ahead.
The特殊情况 is your sign, and the judge will be to use sign when we oppose that precinct school that we can talk about.
Lots of signing.
Yes.
I'll get to that. You remind me to sign. You want to just pick it all up later?
I will.
Okay. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Item number eight, consider and possibly approve sealed bids for the purchase of culverts, road materials, and road oil not previously extended. And I'm going to let our auditor kind of explain and remind you what that extension gave us the ability to do and why not everything was able to be extended. But, my goodness, Barbara's put a lot of work into this process to relieve you guys of this, to make sure that we're getting the appropriate bids on these major purchase items. So Barbara, may I turn it over to you there, item number eight?
Thank you. I sent this to you, Commissioner, so you could look at it, and I've placed something at your desk there so that you can follow along. I'm going to start on the last two pages. This is, these are the bids that were approved in 2020. They were effective July 1st of 20. That bid package included an opportunity to extend for two years. So what we did when it came to gene, we all voted to extend certain items and certain things not to be extended, and then we contacted those vendors to make sure that they had the opportunity to either accept or decline. They did all accept. The ones that we did not extend were culverts, fly ash, pea gravel, iron ore. Those were not extended, so that's what we bid. In addition to that, we bid three-inch limestone, waste oil, and crude oil. So those are the items that we bid, and that's what's included in this new bid for today. The new bid was published in the newspaper, the notice, on July 24th and July 31st. The deadline to apply or to respond was August 9th. We opened those bids on August 17th. We received bids, and this is on the road materials. We received bids from HE Span, Waste Management Fly Ash, and Seaton Construction. These new bids are for one year with an option to renew one year, which will bring everything together at the end so that next year we can't extend once more, and the following year we'll need to rebid everything at that time. So that's why it's like that. When you look at the summary pages over here, it's blankets because a bid was not received on those items. So I'll read those to you. The first item there is the flex space ash. If it's HE Span, HE Span provided us a bid to be delivered. It's $22 per ton. We can pick it up out at the Pittsburgh location for $15 from Waste Management. Bottom ash is $13 from Span or $6 if we pick it up out there. The three-inch limestone HE Span bid, delivered price and a pickup price. Also, washed pea gravel, the same thing, HE Span. Iron ore, the bid comes from Seaton Construction. There's a price to be, they did not offer us a delivered price. They offered us a picked up at the yard for $23 per cubic yard or picked up at their pit in Avenger for $18. They did all supply the noncollusion affidavit and then the general liability. I think Commissioners need to decide. Last year, we talked about if they were not coming on our property, I think y'all made a decision at that time whether or not, you know, you wanted to require that insurance. So then the culverts, the culverts were bid on the same dates, and the responses were required on the same date, the bids were open, and the responses we got were for Holmes Concrete in Gilmer, National Wholesale here in town, and Cox Concrete. The dates, the effective dates, all the rest of that is the same. On the noncollusion affidavit, we did not get a signed affidavit back from National Wholesale Supply. Attached in your packet there is also a letter from Mr. Holmes at Holmes Concrete and some additional information. He is reserving the right to increase his price should his suppliers increase their price. He called me and explained to me that, you know, he wanted to be, he had done business with the county for a long time, but he had no way of knowing what was going to happen in the future. So he did reserve that. The other responses, they did not include that in their bid. So for reinforced concrete culverts, Cox Concrete was the only company that bid. You can see there 12, 18, and 24 inches from $115 to $134. We got no responses for plastic single-wall culverts. We can't special order those at Holmes. Holmes and National Wholesale are the ones that bid on the plastic double-wall culvert. And again, Mr. Holmes wants us, wants to note that he may have to increase those prices, and he also requested that we call in advance because he can make sure he had what we needed there. I know y'all already do that, but since you put that in writing, I wanted to call it to your attention. Mr. Holmes was the only one to bid on the steel culverts. If you see there, the prices are the same for delivered and picked up. That's because he will have his supplier deliver directly to us if that's what you decide you need. He also submitted a bid for polymer steel pipe delivered. I understand that that's a steel pipe that's coated, so those prices are there. And then he also, he did a different size, steel, steel culverts, but different size, and there's different gauges of the steel and a polymer price on that as well. Mr. Holmes also submitted an alternate bid for the narrow band where you hold those culverts together. His price there is the price of one and a half feet of pipe. That fluctuates, so he didn't include an actual price. He just told you what it would be based on, and the same thing for the wide band. With regard to insurance, the other vendors did not mention insurance. Mr. Holmes stated that his manufacturers and suppliers have all those coverages, but he did not indicate whether or not he had any personally.
Does that invalidate his bid?
Well, that's for y'all to determine. Last year, we had some who did not submit insurance, and I believe that court determined that if they did not come on our property, then they were not going to require them to have it. Isn't that right for last year? Yes, I think that's what we've done in the past. If we only go pick up, then we don't require them to have it.
Okay, in each one of these situations, it appears to me that under each circumstance of delivered or nondelivered, you really only have one option until you get to the culverts, the plastic double-wall culverts, and there you have an option between Holmes and National. But do we assume that National is going to hold that price and Holmes could go up? Is that what he's indicating?
That's my assumption based on the information that was turned in. Yes, sir.
Okay, and of course, we have no way of knowing if that price is going to go up or not, so I guess that that leaves you somewhat of a unknown there if you were to choose Holmes Concrete, but he does have a slightly cheaper price per foot throughout those categories. How long have we been dealing with Holmes?
A long time. Yeah. Sure.
10, 15, 20 years is what he's paid. I believe he does a lot of work for a lot of counties.
Are there any surprises to anybody on any of these? Let me, let me read what, I would like to read what Holmes Concrete has to say in the way of a letter from David Holmes, president of Holmes Concrete. "My company's bidding on culverts. I felt it necessary to lead off my bid with a timely and necessary comment concerning the current bid. This is the first time in my 36 years of business to see such volatile conditions in pricing for not only culverts, but just about any other construction material. Previous years and under normal circumstances, we've been able to honor all your annual bids. The historical stability for our bids through the years has been a direct result of the culvert manufacturers being able to purchase raw materials at relatively stable market prices. We're providing your bid at current, real-time pricing. Our steel pipe supplier has indicated pricing could possibly increase 15% to 20% or more during the months ahead. This does not mean it will go there, but this is helpful to the county in budgeting decisions of purchasing pipe ahead of such occurrences. We believe plastic culvert pricing to be more stable at the moment, but this too could change. Our company has always included a price escalation/deescalation policy in all of our previous years of bidding. This year will be no exception. In all the past year's bids, we haven't had to escalate prices. However, the likelihood is much greater than in previous years. My culvert suppliers nor Holmes Concrete will go up unless we have no choice. With support of my conscientious and dedicated suppliers, Holmes Concrete will be a positive support to Titus County in the days ahead. Lastly, you all know I carry a substantial inventory at my yard close to you. Please note additional delivery prices to your county." I appreciate him doing that, and I'm sure he's right. All right, what you want to do?
Make a motion, we accept these bids.
In the case of Holmes versus National, what are you thinking there? Commit to Holmes, go with who's ever cheapest? What do you do?
Submit to Holmes, and if for some reason we can't get it there, then we can go to Holmes, or if price increases, then we can, I mean, can go to National. If price increases, we can go to them.
Are they obligated to keep their prices for us at National Wholesale? In other words, if we choose one or the other, does that relieve any pricing obligations to the county by, say, National Wholesale?
National Wholesale has to stay with their prices if we approve them in any way. So if you're saying you want to go with Holmes as our first choice, and they don't have the availability of the size that you need, or if their price goes up beyond what National Wholesale, they will have to say that as long as we tell them we are accepting these bids. Now, I do want to call your attention again, there is a noncollusion part in there which just says that they didn't get together with any other culvert vendor and, you know, fix the prices. I'm not at all saying they did that. I'm telling you that National Wholesale did not complete that form. He signed his name at the bottom, but he didn't fill it out at the top, and it was not notarized. So that's just for your information. We did not receive bids for waste oil or crude oil, and we had one vendor respond, just an email that says it was discount culverts in Silver Springs. I know I missed the deadline. I know I missed the deadline. If your commissioners need anything, or you can't find it from your approved bids, just let me know, and I'll do what I can, and I will work to respond more timely in the future. That was a man named Josh Whitlock with Summit Bridge Inc.
Okay, so you want to repeat your motion then?
Yes, make a motion. We approve the bids as submitted with the plastic culverts. Plastic culverts will be Holmes.
Primary supplier being Holmes. In the event they are unable to...
Supply.
Supply.
Increase price.
And/or if their prices go above that of National Wholesale, you can defer to National Wholesale. Sound right?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody in agreement with that? Anybody have a better idea? All right, then I guess I need a second.
Some of it is, when you drive to Gilmer to pick it up, it's kind of, it's much cheaper to get it here too, though, because you got to send two guys that would pick it up or one guy, you know?
Who's in Gilmer?
That's at Holmes.
That's Holmes. It's cheaper to just pick it up at National Wholesale.
I agree with that, too.
Because of traveling.
You're taking the company, county vehicle, traveling the road. Something could happen.
And where is Holmes?
Gilmer.
Where is National?
Old Dr. Peck Plan.
Oh, okay.
That may be a little bit higher, but it's...
By the time you figure fuel, that is...
So this, your proposal gives you the ability to consider all those factors?
That's the way I'm putting it, yes. Second.
That is what we've done in the past, Judge Lee. We approved all of those.
So we're approving the bids, and on the plastic culverts, we're giving the court the flexibility to shop with either of those vendors based upon pricing, availability, and travel.
Make a second.
We have second by Commissioner Applewhite. Any further discussion or anything to add to that? Okay, Barbara, thank you again for putting all that together. That's tedious work. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine, considering possibly determine certain equipment items to be surplus or salvage, whichever you want to call it, and approve it for sale. So apparently, there's something that somebody's got that we want to consider selling. And in order to sell it, we need to first, and this is Barbara's recommendation, determine that it is appropriate to sell it. That means we call it surplus, we call it salvage, and that prevents us from, you know, selling our good usable equipment because we're hurting so bad, or we've gone over our budget that we can only provide additional money by selling stuff that we shouldn't be selling. In this case, we want to make it clear, we no longer need this, and it makes more sense to convert it to cash and use it for something else. And so are there any specific equipments, or is this a general description item?
Judge Lee, I was just told that the commissioners were considering holding a surplus or salvage sale of the equipment, and my understanding of the statutes, which I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that we need to have you declare those items as salvage.
And that's based on item number 11, where we're talking about using Auctioneer Express to auction off used equipment. Now, that may just be another general item where if and when we have something that needs to be sold, let's go to, let's make Auctioneer Express our go-to. As for today, is there any certain equipment that we want to declare today to be surplus or salvage and approve it for sale?
I will need a list in my office of whatever it is that y'all decide to sell, because the money, when you sell it, then goes back into your individual precincts, and we'll have to remove that from our fixed asset listing. So that's what we will do with what you give us.
Okay.
And I believe that that, those could be a changing, I mean, you could, you're still evaluating your equipment, is what I'm saying. You may not be prepared to give a list, but I just wanted to, you know, make sure that y'all knew what we were going to need when you decided to do that.
I think we've got a list.
We've got everything.
Of what it is.
Is that something we can then postpone? If we don't have anything to declare right now, let's just keep it in mind that if and when you're ready to sell it, let's get it on the agenda before we just pick up the phone and call Auctioneer Express and sell something, right? When we're ready today, we can tell what we got, what's surplus and what's salvage. We start each precinct. We just have four or five pieces apiece.
I got one.
Just one piece for precinct three.
Sheriff's got some cars that are ready to go.
Well, are we going to try to do it from the, off the top of our head today, or do we want to get this ready for the next meeting? Or you want to, because I'll make a list, Barbara will make a list, and we'll at least have those pieces. Even if you decide not to sell it, obviously, you're not obligated to sell it.
All right, we'll put them right on the list then. And what, do you have any idea what date they would do that auction? Is it going to be?
Not really.
Month or so, maybe?
Yeah.
He's got a couple auctions going on right now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's put it on paper.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So if we have nothing to put in firm writing today, but by the next meeting in two weeks... or is it going to be three weeks? No, it'll be two weeks. Within the next, by the next meeting, Barbara, which will be on the... Well, it is three weeks. Is that too long for y'all to go?
No hurry, really.
If you decide that it is, we could have a special meeting. In fact, I could even add it to the September 2nd public hearing date on budget and tax rate. And that's going to be a week from this coming Thursday, so 10 days from now. So that gives you a midpoint opportunity there if you want to do that. Otherwise, get those lists to Barbara before, say by the 8th of September.
Get with Jeff on the cars for Sheriff's Department?
I think he's got them.
In a van, there's a van there.
He got a list up Friday.
Okay, we were making a list, so he's probably already got that made up.
Yeah. The list is made up.
You know, like Tuesday, agenda, get a Thursday.
Think it's got all the vending, vending numbers and everything on the list.
Okay, here's my suggested motion, that we recognize and agree to the need to declare in advance any items of equipment that we're going to sell to be surplus or salvage. I think that's good enough for now. And that we will make a decision, or we will have a list of equipment no later than September, for the September 13th meeting.
Make that motion.
Okay, that is Commissioner Fitch's motion to declare that we understand all equipment will be properly stated before we sell it, and it will be determined as surplus or salvage before sale. And we will plan to have lists provided by the September 13th Commissioners' Court meeting. So I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Parker. Any further comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, discuss moving a 1988 oil truck from Precinct 2 to shared equipment with possible action. What have you got up your sleeve?
I have a oil truck in my precinct that mainly only use it gets when we chip seal. So we take it out and never precinct, and so instead of me doing all the maintenance on it and filling it up, cleaning it, and filling it back up with diesel in the tank and all that, we share it anyway. We just put in shared equipment, and as we use it, we'll take care of whoever's precinct is using it. And somebody might need it for a water truck or something at one time or something even.
Okay.
So make a motion that we put it in shared equipment, that 88 oil truck.
Second.
You've discussed it with these guys before?
Yeah. We've all been using it, so.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to transfer this 88 oil truck from Precinct 2 to shared equipment between all four precincts. That means that we would bear the maintenance of that piece by all four precincts rather than Precinct 2. Any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 11, considering possibly approve using Auctioneer Express to auction off used equipment for the county.
Make that motion. Use them.
Second.
Second, y'all good with that?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of designating Auctioneer Express as our source for the auction of used surplus and salvage equipment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 12, we're down to our standard items. Approve oral and written reports.
Make that motion.
Commissioner Fitch makes a motion to approve those reports provided by our auditor.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Discussion on any of that? Questions for Barbara? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then you have Cheryl's provided report for your treasurer's report.
Make that motion.
Motion is made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item number 14, approve budget amendments. Here we go. We're getting close to the end of the year, got another month to go, and I've got, these are all 2021, current year related adjustments, number 52, 53, 54, and 55. So let's move through these. Item number 52, the very first one. Here we have an expense of a camera system for the jail that was approved in a, in a one year, and the expense came, you know, came to fruition in another year. So in July of 2020, so that would have been last year's budget, a new camera system for the jail was approved at a cost of $41,000, with $15,000 to be paid from the commissary and the rest to be paid from the sheriff department building maintenance budget. This amount was planned to be paid from the building maintenance in fiscal year 1920 due to the fact that the jail building maintenance cost had been lower than anticipated. However, the new camera system installation wasn't actually completed until November 2020, which effectively moved the cost to the current budget year. During the current year, the building and maintenance costs will not support payment for the camera system. So that same $26,450 is now needing to come out of General County contingency, our account that we set up each year, and it's currently, as of this agenda item, at $143,000. That would take that down to $116,009 by pulling $26,450 out of contingency, putting it into building maintenance to enable sheriff to pay for that camera system upgrade. So that's 52. Item number 53 affects precincts 1, 3, and 4. So these are all reallocations within their existing budget, no new money. Precinct 1 moves $27,200 into other road materials, or pulls it out of other road materials and puts additional monies into gas and oil and road oil, $5,225,000 respectively. Precinct 3 moves $5,200 out of road oil and into oil and gas. And Precinct 4 pulls $7,300 out of road oil and puts it into gas and oil about half and equipment rental about half to provide one more month's rental on that drum roller. So again, no new monies in those three, just reallocating to give them enough money in one specific category. Item number 54, here is another pull from General County contingency, taking it down by another $1,050. And this is per Marcus Carlock, there will be additional rentals needed for jury selections through the end of the fiscal year. So because of COVID limitations, that is the primary driver of this, right? And not being able to have close quarters there in our courtroom A, where the district judges operate, we're having to rent some space at the civic center for juries. And $1,050 needs to be pulled out of contingency. We never dreamed we'd have to still be having jury trials in an off-premise location, but here we do. And I'll state another thing, that in the event that we are, that the trial gets canceled, and we've already committed to the civic center to the tune of about $500 a day, is that right?
About $660 a day.
And if we end up canceling that jury trial because it's been settled or postponed or whatever, we are still obligated to the city. So this request here is for $1,050 to help put some jury selection rental money there to use off-site premises. And then the final, number 55, we do have, I'll go over this one first, we have a pull from General County contingency. That started off at the beginning of the year at what, $250,000?
$400,000.
$400,000. Wow, we ate through it quicker than I thought.
I'm sorry, Judge Lee, $300,000.
$300,000, okay. We started the year with $300,000 contingency. Here is another one. And this pulls it down to, after this $10,000 adjustment, pulls it down to $105,875 to get us through to the end of the year. I sure think we can do that. The need is, because of increased number of autopsies and related transport of bodies, we're pulling $10,000 out of contingency, and we're putting $2,000 into transport and $8,000 into autopsies. Not something we have a lot of control over. The other three are, do not affect the contingency account and is not new money. The first one being increased costs for medical transporting of inmates and increased costs for certification pay earned by sheriff department staff. So we're pulling $5,100 out of jailers-inmates out of county. What does that mean, Sheriff? You've got a category there of salary that has got a bit of a surplus there you can pull from? Is that what that is?
Let me answer that question, please, Judge Lee. What it is, is when we began to have all these out-of-county jailers, y'all approved three new positions to be able to maintain enough staff. So those jailers are coded not to this line item, but to the regular jailer line item so that we keep our budget nice and clean. This money is sitting there, and we've not pulled from this this year. So it's an additional amount. Two, I think two of those positions have been made open, and one has, only one has been filled. So there's extra funds here to cover these costs without having to go to General County.
Okay, and that $5,100, we're going to spread $1,000 of it to medical transport and $4,000 of it to education pay. The next item is, has to do with county attorney state pay. We're increasing the amount of the state allotment for the county attorney. So that was a decision made in Austin to take that state supplement from $35,000 to $42,000, and we are adjusting our books to recognize. And that money comes from the state, and it gets paid to the county attorney. And that has increased 7... And that, that has increased $7,000. The last item is an increase to accrued leave and benefits due to the increased number of employees leaving the county employment, offsetting it with, what is the PCORI fee, which is no longer required?
It's a fee that we had to pay to the IRS because we had self-funded insurance. It was about $6,700 annually, and that has ended. We do not have to pay that fee.
Okay, so you've swept most of that account out of there that's no longer needed. We've pulled $4,600 out of that $6,700 and we've allocated primarily to $4,200 to salaries for these employees that are leaving and we owe benefits to. The rest of it is a little bit for retirement, Medicare, and FICA. And that's it.
Judge Lee?
Yes, ma'am?
May I make one addition on number 54? For the rental, for the district clerk, that's for jury selection, not for the trials. It's for one day.
Is that paying for, paying monies to the jury?
No, no, no. It's rental of the civic center.
It's not for trials. It's just for jury selection. Thank you for clarifying that. So, but it's still, for the same reason, we can't jam them all in over there so we're getting a more safe environment up there. We also could have trials up there, is that possible? Or they're not talking about trials?
They don't mention anything about trials, but my understanding is the Office of Court Administration is requiring that the jury selection be in a much larger place because you call so many people.
Yeah, this, these are not local decisions here because our judges are scared, Office of Court Administration's requiring that. Okay, so this is monies that we pay to the civic center, not for the actual trial itself, but in preparation. The first thing that they, of course, do is select a jury. All right, thank you. All right, lot there. Any questions or comments on any of that? Need a motion to approve those?
Make a motion, we approve them.
Motion to approve the four budget adjustments made by Commissioner Parchman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fitch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, sign pay orders and approve payment of the current stack of bills.
Make a motion, favor.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Fitch. Comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 16, closing comments by judge and commissioners. I'll start off here. September 2, that'll be a Thursday, that'll be a week from this coming Thursday, 10 days. We have a public hearing to discuss our budget and the tax rate. As a reminder, we have already proposed, not that we are absolutely locked in yet, we have proposed a tax rate that is slightly down from last year. And we have provided our budget to the public. We have approved tentatively that budget. Now, we still have time where we can make last-minute adjustments, but those are frowned on by me anyway. But nonetheless, we have an opportunity to let the public address us regarding that tax rate and that budget, September 2, 10 days from now, right here in this courtroom. Also, if you want to tack anything else on to that meeting, please plan appropriately and have it to me no later than the end of this week, because I've got to post that, or James has got to post that, by Monday morning. I'd like to have it posted by Friday afternoon, actually, to give us more than, more than 72 hours. So let's say by 3:00 this Friday, if you're going to add anything to that next week's September 2 hearing. Item second is, for those of you that do not know it, our beloved custodian, David Holmes, will be leaving us at the end of next week. He is going to be heading up to Oklahoma to assist family with a septic system business. And although we don't know what that means for Pam, this is kind of a test the water situation for David and to see how long he might be needed up there, or could this work into a permanent matter. But either way, Pam is staying with us and she'll be doing a lot of living on her, by herself, without David. But please take the time over the next 10 days to express your appreciation to somebody who has served us faithfully for many years. And I have interviewed, I believe, 12 people for that position, and I'm ready to make a decision today. And I'm going to need your approval to have some overlapping time spent so that David can properly train a new custodian. He has a great routine and we would hate to see him walk out and a brand-new green person walk in. So that is one thing I would like you to put on that September 2 agenda, is to approve some additional pay in our custodial budget to allow a week of overlap. And I will plan to have, if it's okay with you, somebody ready to start at least by Monday to spend a full week with David. That's all I have. Commissioner Parchman?
No comment.
Commissioner Fitch?
I'll say David's going to be greatly missed. He's done such a good job for us, we're going to miss him. And I wish him good luck with his future and whatever that brings.
Commissioner Applewhite? Commissioner Parker?
I got word a little while ago that the chipper, they were supposed to be here this afternoon, but they got a truck in this morning, early enough, and loaded, got the, got it loaded. It may be here by now, it's not, sometime between now and lunchtime, the lease one.
Okay.
And so I'll be headed out there just soon, as soon as we get out of here.
Is this an identical unit to ours?
It's not, it's different brand. It's, it's pretty much the same, operates pretty much the same, and it's not quite as, ours go up 22-foot, this one goes to 20s, all it goes to. So.
Okay.
But everything, it is a new machine.
How's our repair going?
The, I got word from them. Yeah. Got, got the call, got a call from them on Wednesday and they were, were, had pulled it in the shop, were tearing it down. Got a call from the appraiser, or Nanny had actually called me and she had got it, gotten the appraisal back on it. And it was something like $4,600 is what it was going to be, or what they were, were saying, but they said there could be some other damage that, that couldn't see, just the appraiser, so.
I guess that's less than I expected it to be.
Do I?
I guess that's less than I expected it to be.
It, yeah.
Okay, good.
It wasn't me, it's 40. Of course, we've got $1,000 deductible, so that's $3,603. And they said they could possibly have it fixed in eight days, is what the appraiser was saying. I haven't got any word back yet from the, from RB Everett themselves. I figure I'll hear something probably today or tomorrow from them.
Is that, is that what the insurance says it should cost? That's not what the actual bill is?
That's what the appraiser did.
Okay, so we hope it comes in that.
Higher to.
We hope it comes in there.
Appraiser.
Okay.
So there could be some unforeseen. They, they told me, RB Everett told me that if, when they got that, that hopper pulled out, that they'd have to check it, make sure it wasn't warped or anything like that. And, but I've got a list of what the appraiser could see that was going to have to be done. And that's, that's what it was, $4,600.
All right, very good. Sheriff, you got a house full over there?
Pretty much.
Pretty much. Okay.
I'm not sure what we've got today. I think they're just going to, I guess, right here. I'm looking at the airport. I'm looking at the lights.
All right, very good. Okay, 10:00, one hour took us today. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Parchman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.